... the last one because they renewed it so long. But we've renewed it all. And we just go last, executive order in response to COVID-19.
I think so.
Executive Order Number 37.
There you go.
All right, that's what I like.
That was a good call. All right, President Hennig, I believe, we started the reporting and everybody has entered the room.
Okay, we are going to do this via Zoom, do the executive order in response to COVID-19, COVID-19 Executive Order Number 37. We'll meet up through Zoom, everybody's on a meeting to order, and we're going to start off with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. What was that?
You come in about five seconds behind the rest of us. You were on a delay.
It was time to tell what we had to talk for.
Yes, we did.
Sorry.
No problem. We got through it. Okay, roll call in.
Tucky Britt.
Here.
Tucky Cook.
Yes.
Tucky Thomas. Here. Tucky Campbell. Here. Tucky Brandt.
Here.
And Tucky Hennig.
Yes, here.
Okay, now I know he's on a delay.
Right, he's on a delay. Okay, so I need a motion, a consideration of my motion to allow Vice President Brandt to attend remotely through electronic participation as per administrative policy 2.04.02. The basis for missing the meeting is due to family emergency and for the state of Illinois gubernatorial disaster proclamation. Executive Order 2020-07 and PA 101-0640, suspending requirements that members of a public body must be physically present to add such a motion. Pat and Linda, roll call both, please.
Tucky Campbell. Yes. Tucky Cook.
Yes.
Tucky Britt.
Yes.
Tucky Thomas. Yes. Tucky Hennig.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Tucky Brandt, you are now present.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, conservation ethic. Linda, could you read that again, please?
Conservation ethic goal number six. We foster a conservation ethic among the county officials in regard to protecting the park. In nature, develop a greater awareness of our role in the community of life. A conservation ethic asks us to assume the moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then to act on that information. Conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's public space. Goal number three, to manage areas in such manner that archaeology, archaeological and historical resources are integrated with natural resources for optimal preservation, education, and recreation benefits.
Thank you. And Bill, could you do the conservation stewardess stewardship place, please?
Glad to make it to France by standing up for our water, wildlife, way of life in the Kevin County. A quality of life in the Kevin County, and sustainable natural resources, properly developed cities and towns, a strong economy, and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and experience. Number seven, we will create opportunities for meaningful outdoor recreational experiences for people of all ages, cultures, and abilities.
Thank you. We don't have anyone that needs to be taken out, so we can skip that. Presentation introductions, who is doing that part?
So Chief King, I believe you're online. Would you introduce our new officer, please?
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. Hi, everybody. So I want to introduce to you Officer Roy Drexler. Roy comes to us as a lateral transfer to our police department. And so what that means, for those of you who might not be familiar with the term, is that Roy already has experience at the police office. So he served with Waukegan Police Department for the majority of his career. And so he has the police academy and he has a lot of the training that we're normally investing in with the newer officers. So Roy comes to us as a new officer with almost 30 years of experience. But we're so happy to have him on the team. He is a veteran of the U.S. Marine Corps, and he specialized in Waukegan in community-oriented policing, community service. He worked for a while in the schools. And so he knows a lot about police work, but he doesn't know a lot about us yet and how we police. So I'm so happy to be starting this adventure with him on the team. And this is the first time we're doing a lateral transfer, and we're all hoping it's very successful. Roy actually has already completed his Step One of field training, which took about a week and a half, which would normally take a full month with a new recruit just out of the academy. So the rest of the steps probably won't go quite as quickly. Step One is a lot of very basic and foundational police stuff that Roy knows how to do very well, but we're excited about this accelerated process and excited to have Roy on the team.
Thank you. Hey, Roy.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Is Roy online? I got him. Yeah, he's the one with the question mark. Oh, okay. He is, he's online.
Oh, okay.
Put it on the phone.
All right, welcome.
And I cannot get this stuff for Cindy.
Okay, and Bill, are we moving on to the next one, then?
Yes, we are.
Oh, okay.
Tonight, we have for you a presentation about our agricultural ARC GIS program with Cindy Rendell. And I'm going to turn it over to Ed Collins, who's the Director of Land Preservation and Natural Resources, to give you a little background on what you're going to be seeing this evening. Ed?
You're going to see it on screen. The power's not turned on.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, Ed, I can.
Okay. Cindy, are you?
I can't see you, Beans.
Well, that may be a blessing, Dave. Cindy, are you ready to go?
We're not ready for her to go.
Okay. Well, I tell you what, I'll do the introduction while you guys are working on that. And I just have a few things to say before Cindy gives you the presentation on our GIS program for agriculture. Some of it I've said before, but it bears repeating, and that is that farmland is going to be part of the conservation district for years. And not only does it produce income for us, but it also is a crucial step in the long-term goals that we have of restoring habitat. And what I mean by that is whether the farmland is gifted to the district or required, we often get it in very poor condition. And the farm program allows the land to regain its ecological health prior to us expending some very expensive funds for native seed. And so the farm program helps elevate the level of potential project success when we do habitat restoration, because the land has had some time for the soil to get back in shape. So it's a crucial step in that process. It's not just an income producer. We do this in a couple of ways. One is through our conventional farmland program, and that allows us to help rebuild soil so that it infiltrates water better, it increases the soil health, it slows down erosion, and it helps the soil biota, those small things that live in the soil, to recover. We also have our joint grassland venture program. And that's primarily a hay program that's designed to allow us to produce hay on land and also to produce breeding grassland birds. So both of those programs get our lands ready for the next phase in habitat restoration. This is done through three different things, and Cindy is going to talk about them tonight, but I wanted to introduce them because sometimes the terminology is easy to bleed one into another, and there are different components of the farm program. Our farm policy helps set direction for the overall farmland program that the district has, and that's dependent on our farm management system, which Cindy is going to talk about. So there are really three components, the policy, the program itself, and then the farm management system. The foundation of all of this is having good data to work with, knowing the who and the what, the when and the where, and the how of what occurs on 6,500 acres of farmland that the district administers. So it's a good portion, about a fourth of the district's overall holdings. And what you're going to see tonight, what Cindy will present, is the result of many district staff working with a number of partners at Liberty Prairie Foundation and the Delta Institute and a couple of funders who helped design and fund the first phase of the farm database. So much of it did not come from the district operational funds. It came from grant funds, including some of Cindy's time to develop it. But I especially want to thank Cindy, who is the architect of this, Gail Brown, who helps with agricultural database information, Sandy Rogers, who helps administer the program, Glenn, who I think you all know is our on-the-ground person, and Randy Rewalt, who got the wonderful task of transcribing several file cabinets full of very old farmland information to be part of the database. So I'll finish up by saying in 2018, when we began this, the farm database consisted of four very large file cabinets filled with files and a scattering of digital lists that had come over in our reorganization in 2013. And I think what you'll see this evening is things have come a very long way in 24 months. With that said, I will turn it over to Cindy and take it away.
Hi, everybody. Bear with me as I try to, I'm going to try to navigate this and hide some of the screen so I can read through my presentation, and then I'm hoping that I can actually demo some of the system for you. So I will start, so we're just, I'm going to give you a quick overview of the program, and then what our needs were, what the goals of the system were, and then the benefits and some of the other changes that occurred as the result of the project. So this is just a little timeline.
Wait, hold on. We don't see it yet, Cindy.
Oh, okay.
Did you share your screen?
Oh, see, it changed my screen, so it didn't, all right, hold on.
Turn this hand up.
Okay.
Yes. Thanks.
So I don't see.
Can you hit the share screen button at the bottom?
Yes, everything was minimized, so I didn't realize, okay. Oh, that.
Are you done? Yep, we got it.
Perfect.
Okay, now we can see a timeline. So in the 1970s, we acquired our first farm field. 2001, we had a bond referendum. 2006, we developed the version one of the farm policy. 2007, we had another bond referendum, so we're acquiring more land. 2013, the program moved over to land preservation and natural resources. And in 2015, we made an update to the farm policy. And about that time, I started with the district, and I started getting a lot of requests for maps. And so at that time, we started to look at, well, what information do we have? In 2016, I took some time to centralize all of the GIS data that we had and try and update the farm parcel data. And in 2018, we worked with the Liberty Prairie Foundation, the Delta Institute, and Forest Site Design to develop an agricultural conservation index. And in 2020, right now, I published our, I redesigned the structure of our database, which I'll be talking about in great detail, and published it through our online organization account, through RTIS, our GIS. So that's kind of where we're at. So for me, developing a system requires me to not only understand the details of what our needs are and requirements within our division, but also the district, and how does that information, you know, flow back up into the farm program policy itself and our overall mission. So I'm just going to, I won't read the entire farm policy, but there are pieces of it that I'm just going to highlight. And I'll start with our mission statement. McHenry County Council District exists to preserve, secure, and manage natural areas and open spaces for their intrinsic value and for the benefits to present and future generations. So from that, then, the farm management program policy, right, the district is responsible for the ecological integrity of each conservation area at home and must actively manage these lands to prevent the degradation of natural resources contained in them. So the farm management program, its intent is to demonstrate that ecologically managed agricultural lands are profitable for the farmer, buffer and improve district natural resources, and benefit all the citizens of McHenry County by providing open space and groundwater and infrastructure. And then I just highlighted in green, it's basically just reiterating the benefit of the program, right? The farm fields function as buffers for our natural areas. This entire program allows us time to generate plans and funding sources for restoration of the land, and ultimately, it contributes to the local agricultural economy. So I'm not sure how many of you have actually seen the farm policy goals, but these are the five main goals from our farm policy. Goal one, to protect and conserve natural resources. Goal two, build. Goal three, to be equitable. Goal four, to promote regenerative agriculture on district land. And goal five, to support beginning and young farmers. That, that's a high level, right? What does the district do, or what does our farm program do? What's its purpose? And then over the last couple of years on various efforts, you know, we have identified very specific needs that we require of the information that we want to collect and do collect. So this is a high-level list of the major, the major needs. So the first one we have here is accurate data, right? The ability to provide accurate and up-to-date farm data for the district. Easy access, I mean, this is a big one, right? Enabling access to paper, tabular, digital, and geofacial information for district staff. Mobile data collection. I want to be able to access our data out in the field or in the office, or at another office. Monitoring and management, the ability to track and manage information related to crop summary, conservation practice, implementation, monitoring, and maintenance of our farm fields. And lastly, the agricultural conservation index. We want to take the idea that we developed and the effort we did in 2018 and integrate that with the entire farm program information model. And so the first phase of the project, which I just wrapped up at the early, the early part of 2020, we met the first three needs there. So I developed accurate data, and made it easily accessible and available in the field. And that's kind of the. So once I understand our mission and our goals and what our needs are, then I have to take a look at, okay, what, how, what is the focus for a system, for something, something we can use to manage all the information we need to report and already have? So these were the main goals for the system. So we want to be able to develop a more efficient method for managing our lease invoices and payments while providing document management for our operators and staff. And you'll see, highlighted in blue, I actually tried to relate my system goals to, you know, policy goals. Develop a method to track lease compliance, conservation practice, compliance management, and monitoring farm fields. Implement the use of the agricultural conservation index as a method for measuring successful outcomes as outlined in our district resource. And lastly, provide an accessible and easy-to-manage method for reporting and archiving all the output needs from the system. So that's, that's the details of what we wanted to do. And then this is my simplified image of what we created. So basically, in the center there, we have a farm program, that's the geographical information system where all of our farm program data will be stored. And then that system needs to be able to talk to these other two pieces here. So on the one side, we have the farm program database. So the output from there, you have our leases and our invoices, farm history, and at some point, agricultural conservation. On the other side there is making all of that information accessible in the field. Collect data, you want to view data, or summarize data, which is part of what I'm going to show you. So how do I go about that? Well, the first thing that needs to be done is I need to develop the GIS. And so that, there's a lot involved in that, but in a nutshell, it's creating a database. So I need to create all the pieces of information that we want to use to produce maps and reports and summaries and output. So that's the big foundation that will allow us to do all the other things we want to do. So for this phase, the first part was creating this database, and then I created some web applications and some maps and dashboards. So those are the things that we come up with. So the main, the main pieces of database for the farm program contain three different farm fields, and there's a lot of other information in there, but these are the, these are the main pieces of the database. Without, without all of this, you basically can't do any of the other things that we are talking about doing with the information. So the first piece of information is the farm lease parcel. This is used to identify all areas included in a lease agreement. Then we can identify at that level, I took the time, I ran every parcel through environmental impact, and I was able to. And other detailed location information is stored at that level. I also took the time to. And then we're beginning to build some of the farm history for each of those parcels also. So from there, then I created farm fields. And farm fields are used to break down that parcel even further. I could have multiple fields. You know, this could be one field that has hay and another field that's crop land, one pasture. So we have those circumstances, and we need the ability to identify use type at those individual field levels. And then we will be working on an effort to also identify the resource goals, erodibility, and, you know, the future of each of those fields at that level. And then lastly, the farm conservation areas. These are new. Historically, we had pieces of these fields or these areas in different locations in our GIS, but I'm really excited about that piece of it, because I already use that piece of it, providing summer planning. So the farm conservation areas are things like our field borders, waterways, existing water, and other. So once I was able to create all of that data, then I was able to create what is called a web application in GIS and a dashboard. So the dashboards are, it provides a single location where we can summarize the farm program or impacts or resource or whatever we dream up. And the web application then allows me to take multiple dashboards and summaries or maps and compile it all together. So I have a single location to go to, have managers or staff go to, where they can look at this information over time. I'm going to done it, so bear with me, I'm going to stop this share and then share the.
She's going to come back.
Okay, can everybody see this?
Yes.
Okay, so this is, this is our web application. So we have an online organization account through our GIS, and right now, it's all internal, it's only accessible by users of our GIS online account. But this is a web application, and I have tabs up here that were created for different things. So this first tab here is basically just a map of our, of our farm fields. So I can zoom in and out, I can click on a parcel and view the information related to Users can actually create data from this location also. So it's pretty useful. Then we can go to, I'm going, what are we looking at? The farm program dashboard. So this dashboard just shows us the summary of the farm lease parcel. So we, I can create all kinds of different, different pieces of information. It's really, you know, what information do we want to look at? What do we want to see? And what do we want to better understand so we can, you know, use some of that information to make decisions about what we're doing on the land. So we have 106 active farm lease parcels. Out of that, we have 160 farm fields. And this graph might be hard to see, but the farm field use type, right, I can identify, I can summarize by use type. If we look over here, we can look at the farm conservation areas, and I've got 300 acres of field border, 171 acres of filter strip, and what do we got? 15 acres of grass waterway. And then this area down here just shows you the total acre for our farm conservation I'll show you one for the dashboard. Wrap this up. We did take the time to identify various environmental impacts also. So this particular dashboard is looking at a few of those attributes. We'll start over here. So the number of crop land parcels that are 500 feet from a TV wildlife observation, 83 out of our 106. So most of our farm parcels. The number of crop land parcels that are within 500 feet of water, 72. And 10 of the parcels are within 500 feet of a known TV plant observation. And if we look at over here, we've got 1,300 acres that are highly erodible land. And then this little pie chart here, this kind of just breaks down the actual attribute sign. So we have highly erodible land, unidentified highly erodible land, not highly erodible land. So this, I am very excited about that, what this means, because I can go and edit my data over here, and those charts are automatically updated. So this is all live data. And this is, this is. And this, this is, this is something I'm hoping to get more of our managers using so that instead of, you know, having to wait for me for an answer, you know, this information can be readily available, especially for specific questions that we might have frequently. So we can start to develop some of those summaries so that they're just always available. All right, let me take it back to the presentation. Are we good?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So, um, once, once we develop a system, we typically change the procedures that we had historically used to manage information. And sometimes we aren't managing information, right? In our case, a lot of the farm data are stored on paper files. So there were, there were a few changes regarding our standards and procedures that came up during this phase of the effort. So things like, we decided to use a farm lease parcel ID versus a farm parcel name. And then we standardized our leases a little bit by incorporating the joint grassland venture conservation practices directly into the lease template. I'll be working with Sandy to update our legal description. And we also were making changes how we're filing a lot of the information digitally on the network. And then I, I took some time to standardize some of my map making templates. So the bid and lease maps can be generated all at once. I created a template we can use contact with where they can fill out information and send it back to us. So things like that that will hopefully make our process a little bit more efficient. So the old system and the new system. Our old system, we had a lot of information in a lot of different places and we're still working through a lot of this. If you can imagine, if I wanted to find out how many acres of, of a conservation area did I have and it's stored in a paper file somewhere, I'd have to go and pull each one of those paper files to, to get those acres and then, you know, summarize that. So now we've got this new system and that's just kind of a, an example that shows what the table structure looks like in my database. So the hope is that we can reduce some of our time spent searching for and creating information every time we have a new request. The benefits obviously are we, we can reduce time spent locating and indexing data. We can ensure the security of the data for future use. The ability to compare and analyze data will help improve our decision making. The ability to share data across the organization and with producers. And we're enabling district staff to better reach the farm policy goal. The next steps. So this is a high level, 2019, 2020, that was what I just finished, which is basically creating the foundation for doing these next two efforts. So right now, I'm working on developing the information model to track and manage crop summary information and management information and monitoring. And then the last part of the effort is really the final reporting component of the information system. So moving that agricultural conservation index from a Google form into a relational database so we can use that long term. What I got.
Boy, I sure wish I could have seen it.
Thank you.
We did a copy for you, Dave.
Yeah. Only I'm not going to mail it to you, Dave, because who knows when we'll get back.
Thank you.
That was great, Cindy, thank you.
Yeah, it was very nice, thank you.
Appreciate it. Very good.
That was great. Okay, we're going to move on to trustees' report. Any trustees, anything they want to report? All good?
Well, maybe one thing, I volunteered to be Kishawaki River ecosystem partner, CREP, as a board representative, and we're having a meeting this, the 28th. I forget what day this is, but whatever the 28th is. So I'll report that next month.
Okay, sounds good. Do we have, so if we move on to nine, all county board liaison, do we have five?
I do not speak them on.
Okay. So move on to president's report, I don't have anything other than what all of you already know. So we can move on to public comments. Do we have public, public that wants to comment? Cindy doing? Wendy's doing that?
Wendy, anyone want to comment? You're sticking her head, no, I think I can. I'm not seeing any hands up.
Okay. So let's move aside then. Well, an old agenda. So Lynn, you'd like to make that motion, wouldn't you?
Yeah, I'd love to make the motion. All right. So I moved that we approve the consented agenda, which includes the following. 12.1, approval of minutes of previous meetings. 12.1A, July 14, 2020, finance and admin. 12.1B, July 16, 2020, committee the whole. 12.1C, July 21, 2020, regular monthly meeting. 12.1D, June 18, 2020, executive session. 12.2, acceptance of the treasurer's report. This is 12.2A, July 31, 2020. 12.3, resolution number 2066, a resolution accepting the fiscal year 2021 through fiscal year 2023 strategic plan tactics work plan as presented. 12.4, second reading ordinance number 20-990, an ordinance amending the comprehensive administrative policy procedure manual 2.04.06, remote participation, 2.04.08, storage and disposal of meeting recordings, and 4.01, records retention, dash, public access. 12.5, resolution number 20-67, a resolution authorizing the purchase of three replacement vehicles directly off the Illinois state bid purchasing contract for total cost not to exceed $90,000. 12.6, resolution number 20-68, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute a contract with Petro Choice of Elgin, Illinois, the lowest responsible and responsive bidder for unleaded and diesel fuels at plus .2700 per gallon over market price the day the fuel is delivered for a period of one year starting September 1, 2020 and ending August 31, 2021. Resolution point to 12.7. Resolution number 20-69, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute a contract with AmeriGasPropane DPLLC of Gurnee, Illinois, the lowest responsible and responsive bidder for the purchase of propane fuel at a cost not to exceed $1.005 per gallon for a period of one year starting September 1, 2020 and ending August 31, 2021. 12.8, authorization to prepare specification and let bids for the purchase of native seeds for standard mixes for countywide land preservation and natural resources division projects. 12.9, authorization for staff to begin the negotiation process on the listed agricultural leases on 20 parcels containing approximately 1,866.39 plus or minus acres. All right, I'm just going to name the parcels, do we care about the amount?
It's on the, that's fine.
Okay, so we're talking Coral Woods, Pleasant Valley, Beckwood, Queen Anne, Clumpkin, Pleasant Valley, Winding Creek, Pleasant Valley, the Cincade, Brookdale, Lost Falls, Queen Anne, Mankie, Kishawaki Corridor, Monaco, Kishawaki Corridor, O'Connor, Brookdale, Paulson, Hollows, Pison, Brookdale, Suntree National, Brookdale, Roberts, Kishawaki Corridor, Rose, Kishawaki Corridor, Sultis, Coral, Coral Woods, Woods, William, O'Leary, Queen Anne, Wolf's Fluff Creek. 12.10, authorization for staff to begin the negotiation process on the joint grassland venture leases on nine parcels containing approximately 245.42 plus or minus acres. Boone Creek, Coral Woods, Kling Parcel, Bush Lake, Lind Wood, Marengo Ridge, Pleasant Valley, Silver Creek, Winding Creek, and Winding Creek slash Bailey Woods. 12.11, resolution number 20-70, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute a license agreement with LL Bean for the use of the Hollows Conservation Area and SELL Pro RRR and Prairie View Education Center for paddleboard, archery, and fly casting classes. 12.12, resolution number 20-71, a resolution acknowledging November 3, 2020, as a 2020 general election day per public act 101-0642, and to recognize it as a one-time paid holiday for calendar year 2020. 12.13, resolution number 2072, a resolution authorizing the payment to the McHenry County treasurer for the 2020 second installment property taxes and fees in an amount not to exceed $87,833. 12.14, resolution number 20-73, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute an intergovernmental agreement granting license for facility use with the Illinois Nature Preserves Commission for office space at Lost Valley Visitor Center. 12.15, ordinance number 20-991, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a land preservation project and gift agreement and the memorandum of understanding with McHenry County Conservation Foundation, McHenry County Conservation District, and James and Bonnie Lates. 12.16, resolution number 2074, a resolution authorizing membership in the Northwest Health Insurance Pool, Subpool of the Intergovernmental Personnel Benefits Cooperative. 12.17, resolution number 20-75, a resolution motion authorizing the executive director to execute an agreement with Psychic LLP of Naperville, Illinois, to serve as the district's independent auditors and perform audit services for fiscal years ending March 31, 2021 and 2022 at a cost of $21,800 and $22,250 respectively.
Thank you.
I second. Grant.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, so I have a motion made and seconded for consent. Uh, motion, uh, would you like to call roll?
Sure, trustee Thomas, yes. Trustee Brandt.
Yes.
Trustee Britt.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
And trustee Hennig.
Yeah.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I should tell you, if you ever want to break that, I can take over for you if you need me.
All right.
Other board, there's an approval of bills payable for the month of July 2020. Treasurers' internal audit, uh, so we need pull free bills. If they have any they want to pull. Dave, have you worked on that?
I have. Um, I'll say one.
I'll be calling on you.
Okay, first one is I 7819, Secretary of State Police for $151. And I'll see if anybody else has anything.
Um, I have.
Hearing none? Oh, go ahead, never mind.
Oh, that's okay, it doesn't matter. I, uh, C 7785, Captain Rod boat list.
Hey, Dave, do you have another one?
I do. N 8559, Northern Illinois Service Company for $623 even.
Okay. We've met our requirements there. Hey, that'll rule us on to a consideration to approve, uh, so that if, I guess if we don't hear anything and we're assuming that sales are fine when Andy checks them out, if he finds a problem, he's going to let us know.
We would, yeah.
Well, no, he, he, in, in the packet, he shows the bills and they were all according to policy, so they're good.
But we'd have a discussion about it if.
Yes, we would say hey, we found something.
Yeah, I guess I'm letting, I guess the public knowing and everything, that's what we would do. Okay, Treasurers' internal audit, we did that. Consideration to approve the payment to ConservFF as indicated on permission of bills pending reports. Okay, so does anybody want to make a motion to pay ConservFF? Pat makes a motion, Bill will second. Uh, no discussion, call roll.
Trustee Brandt.
Yes.
Trustee Britt.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas, yes. Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Hennig.
Yeah, I'll abstain.
Oh, yes.
Okay, then we have, if somebody would like to make a motion to pay the balance of the bills. So Bill would make that motion, would you second? Linda, thank you. Call the roll.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas, yes. Trustee Brandt.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Britt.
Yes.
And trustee Hennig.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Our next motion up is consideration of a resolution authorizing the executive execution of a professional service agreement for engineering services for stream erosion and trail stabilization of the Prairie Trail South. And I assume they have far as they needed to go with all of that.
Yes, I would like to, we do have a resolution for you, an agreement for not to exceed $63,000 for full disclosure, based on the communication that we sent the board last Thursday night. Staff had received after, and again, I don't know exactly where the confusion, but the pricing from Hay and Associates. Hay and Associates has done work with the district before, so everything is legal. During an RFQ process, there's two ways to approach it. Staff can review, they did do a very methodical review without looking at pricing and selected their top firm. What ended up happening is an email that was dated prior, that did come to the district prior to the 21st, which was the day that the letter of the agreement was shared. So I did find that out, actually, just on Monday, I looked into that over, when I got an email back with the proposals, I kind of looked into that on Friday. So again, everything is legal, I talked with council, we have done work with them, but obviously, it's more of a process step that, that wasn't as I would have liked.
Okay, well, we're good to go today.
Yes, so that's been.
And the $63,000, is that a follow-up? They thought it was B or, can't remember, is that what?
Um, I believe so, and I believe John's online with the total, pull-up the board summary that we had initially as a reply.
Yeah, the, the projection on it was when we budgeted about a year ago was $65,000. And that was based on what we knew was coming in on the projects in the Ringwood area. We knew that, so we kind of extrapolated from that, so we actually hit the mark.
Very good. Does anybody else have any questions, comments? Somebody like to sponsor that resolution?
I will.
Okay, Bill?
If you're going to read it.
Yeah, you can or I can either one of those.
Okay. Resolution 20-76, authorizing the executive director to execute a professional services agreement with Hay and Associates of Polo for a cost not to exceed $63,000 for engineering services for the stream erosion and trail stabilization of the Prairie Trail South.
Lynn has a second. Everybody have any more discussion? Say none, call the roll.
Trustee Britt.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas, yes. Trustee Brandt.
For a full disclosure, one of the principals is a very good friend of mine, so I refuse myself.
Say thank you.
Trustee Hennig.
Yep.
Motion passes on a vote of five to zero with one refusal.
Three, two, three, and three. Anything else that we don't know about this one, or are we, it's good to go?
We're good to go.
If they want to sponsor that resolution?
Sure, I will.
Okay, Lynn is going to read it?
Sure. Um, I moved that we, for the consideration of a resolution authorizing the submission of, well, I moved that we approved a resolution authorizing the submission of a federal land access program grant application.
submission of a federal land access program grant application submittal for improvements through the Hart Road access to Glacial Park Conservation Area and associated trail and wildlife improvement.
Point of borders, that's Resolution twenty dash seventy-seven.
Exactly, I just saw them, sorry.
Okay. Any discussion by anyone? Call the roll.
Trustee Brandt.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Britt.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas, yes. And Trustee Hennig.
Yep.
Motion passes unanimously.
Yeah, that moves us to executive director's report.
Okay, um, I gave you a lot on, uh, Thursday night, so I'll be very brief, uh, this evening. Um, the legislative update, uh, to begin with, um, I believe I chaired the American Great Outdoors Act, which is funded for Land and Water Conservation Fund, so that is, that is, we fought years and years and years with many trips to Washington, DC, uh, and so that is great news, and so, uh, that will be fully incorporated, um, and so, uh, that will, uh, have impact also, um, the, uh, funding for OSLAB. Again, everybody in the special district areas, parks and conservation forests of districts, did amazing jobs to ensure, uh, that OSLAB, uh, would retain its funding, and so more to come, but there are a lot of grants that are still being, that we're looking at and trying to make our dollars go a lot farther, so those opportunities do exist. Um, we're waiting to see what's happening with COVID, and obviously, we've had, uh, you know, two weeks with, uh, at the larger level of what's happening for elections in November, um, and we've got our, our date off in November for elections, and then probably all through COVID, um, you know, there'll be more things up and coming that will just, uh, things will start to hit, and, uh, we'll be reporting on. So, um, that's, it's a, that's news. Um, as far as COVID, um, I did want to share, you know, we are continuing to stay socially distanced to do the work, our numbers are up, we've shared with you a lot of the social media listings of this to see what impact we're having from Google Analytics, and photographs that are out, and people using their smartphones when they're out on Conservation District sites, and, uh, it is wonderful to see, um, our sites are being loved and used, and, uh, and that is awesome. Um, the grants we did apply for for reimbursement, and we just received word, um, that that will be funded, so forty-six thousand dollars, correct, John, on that, is that correct? Forty-six thousand?
Yeah, yeah, it's, um, the district spent to date, I'm gonna use some round numbers here, the district has spent to date, um, like thirty-five thousand on it, uh, and all of that appears eligible, and then in addition to that, we project that we'll be spending about another eleven thousand between, um, basically July one and December thirtieth, uh, and all of that appears to be eligible, so that's, uh, that's our target.
Wonderful, John, wonderful.
Okay, so that'll help us with all those additional expenses we weren't anticipating, and, uh, again, great to have, so great job on that. Um, we did, uh, through council, um, after our meeting last week, I did speak with special council on the Three Hundred West, and, um, the neighbors have received, there is a meeting that's scheduled for September twenty-third, uh, at six-thirty in the evening, I will send that information out, we are preparing to be there, we have not yet received an invitation from the Health Department, um, Board of Health, um, but we assume that will be forthcoming, but the date is September twenty-third. Um, the, uh, there's a couple events, and I'll send it out in the weekly update on, everybody's doing virtual, uh, luncheons, meetings, and so, um, we've got the IETD, that's the best, open land, has their virtual, um, luncheon, um, the Illinois Environmental Council does as well, so I will send that out to everyone. Um, the fall landscapes is out, and registration is open, uh, there was a great article in the Northwest Herald today on our outdoor concerts, so, um, we've normally had concerts out on the deck, uh, at Glacial Park, uh, but this year with social distancing, we are limiting the number of people, and we are charging a fee, so, um, we will see how that goes when, uh, those tickets fail. Um, and then, I'll, I'll just leave you with, there was a great article, uh, in the Tribune, um, that appeared, um, just this week, and they were talking about why Chicago parks, uh, are so crowded during the COVID pandemic, we've been talking about our increased usage out on our site, and they were looking, and of course, um, they don't have enough space to support the population density that they have, and so everybody's flocking to these areas, obviously, the Lakeshore, um, you know, there were limitations that were placed on there, but it really reveals that due to climate, um, the city needs more green space, so, again, a great message back to, great, believe already, our voters here in McHenry County have protected those natural areas, and that, uh, they had the foresight to, to do it right, so, again, I just thought that was great information, and that's all I have.
Can I ask a question, uh, with the kids going back to school throughout McHenry County, um, how does that affect what our education department is able to do in, in relation to COVID and remote learning, and, you know, their normal programs versus what they're gonna be able to do this fall?
Sure, well, I believe Wendy's online, and she could probably share, they've done a lot of material and prep for outreach and virtual programming, but Wendy, what are you guys specifically doing?
Yeah, so, so far, we're still seeing people participate in our announced programs that you see in landscapes, um, but right now, they have nine field trips that they would usually have students come to us, or we would go to them, that they're creating as virtual, so they're working with Caitlin and Pac and jinging those up, so they're reaching out to all the teachers and, and, um, making contact and trying to fill their needs as much as possible, as red as, as well as these canned programs, um, that they've gotten together, so they are, you know, rolling with the times, so to speak, and looking three months ahead and kinda, and trying to anticipate these needs far out. The other thing that we, we've just added kind of late in the fall, Elizabeth probably doesn't even know about this, is that conservation kids activities in a box for like after-school programs, um, so the kids that just want to get outside and get away from being online, um, we give them instructions to do kind of like little nature activities and crafts at home, so we're adding to those types of programs, just to stimulate kids, since we can't get to them, but they can do more of those do-it-yourself, DIY, DIY programs. So, yeah, we're rolling.
Thank you, Wendy.
I just want to say, um, I should have put it before, congratulations on the, it was a great article, gosh, it was, it's a girl in the Northwest Herald, and the, the wildlife, right, wildlife is, and so kudos to our Wildlife Resource Center and the work that they did, and, uh, to push that information. Sometimes we're lucky that the Northwest Herald or other will pick up a story and run with it, um, and, uh, our social media, we push a lot of stuff out, but that was one that was just a great, great, uh, wildlife interest story.
It was, it was nice, so thank you on that.
Thank you for sharing.
Yeah.
Are you?
I'm done.
I wrote it, okay, good, thank you. Okay, uh, committee assignments and reports. Uh, Lynn, you're up first with Fox River Social System.
Okay, so, um, it's actually tomorrow, and everything is on Zoom, so I can send out a link, because you do have to register, uh, but they're doing, um, a, what it is tomorrow is our prep membership meetings program, so, uh, starting at one o'clock, um, it's about plastics in our watershed, um, what do you know about plastics? Yeah, gotta get this out of my way. Um, what happens to the plastics you put in your recycling bin, uh, what can we do about p- plastic pollution and single-use plastics? And I, I think if they've also been able to identify how they can measure plastic in the water, so that's tomorrow, I'll send out a link if, if you're interested, again, uh, you do need to register to get on, and I think, um, October, uh, is going to be a new network, so that's October fourteenth, it's always the second Wednesday of the month, the program is TACMA TAC on National Wildlife Refuge, and it's, uh, it's, it's presence in our watershed, and the presenters are Nancy Williamson and Steve Byers, and it's gonna, again, be by Zoom, let's get that out to everybody.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dave, you were next, and did you report already on the, on crap that, that's coming?
Yes, apparently I was a little premature, but yep.
That's okay. All right, that's taken care of. Okay, um, Ed, are you there for wrap?
Uh, yes, I am, I don't have much new to report, I am still, um, helping out with editing some of the, some of the language in the report, but I have nothing new to report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Elizabeth, uh, Chicago Wilderness?
Yes, so, um, online, I'll send out a link to you, there are a lot of great webinars that have been ongoing, Move Our Vision, and different working groups, so, um, they just got one, we're working on setting up our goals with water, um, we had one on agriculture, the green economy, um, the people and nature kind of benefits, and so that's changed states. Um, we're also working, um, to prepare for, uh, some training and education on, uh, the diversity, equity, and inclusion, uh, to be forthcoming, um, and then, um, the alliance is, um, we're doing our, um, we're still in a Zoom-type format as well, so anybody that would like to attend, it's not a trip in Chicago, and so, uh, the next meeting, uh, will be in October, that's all I have.
Hey, Pat? Uh, there's nothing really to report, okay? Okay, and the next one is, uh, well, there's three of them, but anyway, Dave or Elizabeth, either one of you have anything to, for that one?
Elizabeth, help, please.
Okay, so, the Illinois Association of Conservation Forests of their districts met last Thursday for a Zoom meeting, and so we talked about some of the funding that we have, and how we could do a member initiative or something that would help all of the, uh, suburban conservation forests or districts and those that are part of the organization, so more to come on that, we will meet again in January. Um, the IETD has their best of the best, and that will be in October, um, we have not yet found out whether we will be receiving the award that was submitted on our work, uh, during the COVID as a partnership, um, and we're looking forward to that. Uh, Dave Brandt will be recognized with a ten-year service anniversary, uh, so, um, that will be happening, and then, uh, NRPA, uh, will be doing their virtual conference, it was supposed to be held in, uh, Orlando, Florida this October, but that has all gone virtual, so, great opportunity for staff and others to participate. I have not yet heard whether IPRA or IETD will be virtual yet, that's still being determined, and then there's also a survey that has gone out, there's a subgroup of, um, that's trying to understand the professional needs of those that are working in conservation district and forest preserve district, so that, those needs will be met better, our faces. No, I have.
Can I add something to you, because I mentioned this before, but, um, you had sent out the, uh, indication that you had been accepted and you're gonna be presenting at IETD?
That's correct.
On the pandemic preparedness report, and all the work that was done here at the district, and I think Jenny's gonna be.
Jenny and others will decide with the panelists, I don't know what it's gonna shape, I had to get an entry in, so I, 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 I gave the title, and it was, and it was accepted, so.
Oh, I think that's great, and I think it's gonna be nice to be able to highlight the, the work that the staff did, so.
Absolutely.
I wanted to throw that in, thank you.
Elizabeth, foundation?
Sure, um, Cam Alphoff is the official board member, uh, trustee, board trustee is a foundation, which, um, I feel that she is a great asset. Um, the Rainbow Ridge update, the fifty acres is now owned by the Conservation Foundation, um, fences are down, deer stands are down, um, all done by a neighbor, and owned now by a nonprofit, and they're going to transfer the district at any point. Um, I sent you all an email, they want to get the board trustees together via Zoom, uh, to kind of coordinate timing, so if you haven't gotten to me, please do. The agenda, that's up to, that's up to John and Tom.
Right.
Yeah, right, so, that's theirs, I'm just coordinating times, and then, as soon as I hear from everybody, I will get back to John and see what we can do there. Um.
Linda, is it, are they looking for evening primarily?
Yeah, I think, I think it is.
Okay.
Evening, so, um, yeah.
I'm blessed, anytime.
Anytime.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Community Foundation, and you were there, what about the Community Foundation? They were, uh, granted a, an award, weren't they not? All I have is Community Foundation, and that was a couple weeks ago, I can't.
I know, I, uh, I don't know.
Okay, I will, they are, uh, looking at some more projects, um, to help the district with, one would be the fiftieth anniversary, the restoration at Blue Creek, at Glacial, and the Native Sea Territory, so those are things, projects we're looking for in the future, um, in the next fiscal year. Uh, I'm going, I'm going, uh, out, like, maybe, um, doing a video at the end of time talks about the foundation, and they're just, um, trying to figure out what information out about, things that are already active out there, so, they're doing that. May parcel, Glacial Park parcel. So, there was some restricted funds that were supposed to be go for that, but that person with the restricted funds said, you know, we won't approve that because there are some around those trees. So, the foundation has actually, um, they're gonna go forward and, and purchase that anyway. I mean, I believe they're looking for other ways to fund it, but they aren't going to actually get that parcel, and maybe down the line though. It was the fifty-four thousand dollars, they cannot use anymore for that parcel, that was a restricted fund for that, but family that's, something around those trees, so, but anyway. Any questions about that? Uh, they're working on wall for the, um, the fiftieth anniversary, the recognition of donors, they're work, they're working on that, um, is that fine?
Hey, I do.
Thank you, Linda.
Secretary, uh, Lynn, you have, uh, the next one, McHenry County Council or MacGyver?
Yeah, MacGyver, they haven't been meeting, um, I think they're, uh, I went back to their website, I, I was meant to give Shailen a call just to see if they're gonna start to plan anything, um, maybe more in a Zoom or virtual, uh, but right now, they're, they're not planning anything through October, so it's possible they'll try something after that, and that's it.
Elizabeth, uh, let's share, is that the study?
Uh, no update on the site.
Some, yeah. Uh, John Kramer, Matt?
No meetings, no updates.
Okay, maybe else have any other outreach contacts we didn't get to report on?
I do.
Oh, very good, Ann.
Um, Ed Collins will be speaking at Green Drink on September second, on the way, uh, Fourth Way of Conservation. It'll be virtual via Zoom. Yeah, so Green Drink is the.
Wonderful.
Yeah, that's the first Wednesday of every month, and, um, I forget what the topic is after that, I think it's, is it, uh, the Aqua?
Yeah.
Aqua cremation is the next month after that, but definitely check in for September, because he does the great speech, um, it's a great talk.
I, I second that, I second that, Carolyn, I do, thanks, great.
Good call.
Thanks, Ann. All right, seeing no others, I will go on to public comments number two, do we have any?
Anybody want to speak? I don't see a hand raised. It does not look, I don't think anybody would want to speak.
Okay, then we're going to, um, executive session, if I have a motion, do yourself.
Do we need an executive session?
Does anybody have a reason?
I don't.
Okay, if we don't have a reason, that's great.
Yeah, I don't think so at this point.
All right, then, we have a motion, we have a motion to adjourn, is that what I got?
Are we there already?
You don't have to reconvene, because we didn't go out.
Yeah, we don't have to re, yeah, we're not gonna reconvene, just that part, maybe we all wish, wish it worked out, it's, we're adjourned, we're moving adjourned, and panel second. I can have the roll come, please.
Trustee Brandt.
Yes.
Trustee Britt.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
And Trustee Hennig.
Yes, we're adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Dave.